We'll call it Scottsboro City Council Meeting, Monday, April 8th. Order the indication given by Gary Stewart to pledge the way to the Montessori.
That's correct. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for this behavior and many blessings you've given us. We ask now that these proceedings will be pleasing to you. We ask that you'll watch over the employees of Scottsboro and the citizens of this city and this country as they go about their daily lives. We ask that you'll bring the military home safely to their families, guard God and direct us so in the end we may all come to thee, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Phyllis, will you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Richard Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Barrett Mashburn?
Here.
Mr. Gary Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Mark Ashman?
Here.
Mr. Patrick?
Here.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Now, if we vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Do I have the next item is the approval of previous minutes from March 25th, 2019, and April 1st, 2019? Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Now, if we vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. If there is no new business, then we'll go to new business. First item is to consider the municipal judge compensation package.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to make a recommendation on that.
Okay.
That it would be $26,000 a year with insurance or give the option of $30,000 a year without insurance. Which is exactly what we had before, $26,000. But in case they decide not to check our insurance.
And that's just family co- or individual.
Yeah, they have the option for family, but they pay to.
Okay. So, your recommendation is $26,000 with insurance or $30,000 without insurance?
Yes, sir.
I have a, do I have a motion for $26,000 a year with insurance or $30,000 a year without insurance for the municipal judge compensation package?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Now, if we vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item is to consider municipal judge appointment. Do I have a nomination for the municipal judge?
Before we do that, Patrick, since we had tried to put together a committee and due to the fact that it was spring break week and things, people were out of town, the mayor had meetings, and we weren't able to meet as a committee. And so, we kind of had to talk to each one individually. But at this moment, I'd like to make a motion to hire Darryl Eustace.
Darryl Eustace. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? If not, we'll close the nominations at this time. Do I have a motion to approve Darryl Eustace as the municipal judge?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there's not any discussion, we'll vote, all in favor for Darryl Eustace as the municipal judge. Vote aye. All opposed, say no. Darryl's the new municipal judge. Yes, and that is effective immediately. Ms. Holloman will be second.
She says she wants.
Okay. Go to item number three. To consider resolution to surplus street department property.
The street department has several signs that they would like to surplus. There's 27 stop signs, 20 Chevron signs, 136 street, 12 speed signs, 100 post and 30 collecting mill advisory signs. They would like to dispose of these by a certain installed.
Do I have a motion to approve the surplus street department property?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Before we do this, this is just signs of not even value to us anymore.
Yes, sir.
Got the parts off of them.
Yes, sir. And the proceeds from the sales will go to your capital funds.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go to item number four. Consider a budget amendment for the knuckle boom for the street department. It's for $141,456. Everything is met as far as the bid requirements.
Anything that will be charged us from the Sourcewell purchasing facility?
Thank you.
Anything that is budgeted, the money's in the budget. If you got off the state good investor for one block, it's by council action.
And tonight, this is for one knuckle boom? We'll get into that with discussion. Do I have a motion to approve the knuckle boom for the street department for $141,456?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? We have a second. In discussion, I'd like to add that we're going to look at, looking at next week on the work session, two more knuckle booms for the, because we're eight months out.
Yeah, we're about three or four months out on the trucks, but we'll come back with some financing options as well, or lease purchase. But we need to get one in the works with the company, but we'll tell them that hopefully we're going to be ordering three instead of one.
Okay. Yes, sir. So for tonight, it's just the one.
Correct.
Any other discussion?
I got a question. I know when our visit meetings, which was back in October, November, we had sort of discussing about about those trucks. And I know we were waiting to see what the sales tax did for the month of January before we done that.
Yeah.
And my question is why we hadn't already kept that in the way? Because I know we're doing a big push right now for the month of April to clean up. So that's my question, why we haven't already done that. We were just slow getting our sales tax numbers, but, you know, we should have been doing this in February.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Go to item number five. Consider budget amendment for child advocacy center. Mayor?
I had gotten a letter, Judge Word has gotten some funding to start a child advocacy center for Jackson County. And it's headquartered where Tom Perkins's office was on the corner of Market and College. And they are soliciting funds to help get this program off the ground. I know Town Section has committed $500 and the City of Bridgeport committed $1,000. And he had sent me a letter or given me a letter requesting that the city participate in some capacity. And so, I was, on our sales tax, I know we're doing quite well, and I think it's a very worthwhile project. And I was going to ask that the city commit $5,000 for this program.
So that said, do I have a motion to do a budget amendment for the child advocacy center for $5,000?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I know they're working really hard.
Yeah. First National Bank has given them a lot of furniture and some other folks have participated.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that is to come out of the sales tax.
Yes, sir.
Next item is to consider the budget amendment for the solid waste department. This budget amendment is for the solid waste department for the $50,000. I gotta hit myself, I was looking at it. I'm trying to get on it. Well, I don't. Do I have a motion to consider the budget amendment for the solid waste department for $50,000?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Mayor, you want to talk about?
Yeah. Stacy's been talking to the state and on their two surplus yards, they, he's already been talking to them, they get dump trucks, backhoes, dozers, various pieces of equipment in, and it's relatively low hours. And when it comes in, it doesn't sell them a lot, but about a week or so. And so, what we were doing is asking for $50,000 to be set aside out of solid waste capital fund. And if a piece of equipment becomes available, we'd get the three signatures required from the council. We want to be able to act instead of having to wait till a work session and then a regular council meeting. So you'd still be notified of the equipment and the amount. It would just be a fund dedicated for that. Like I said, it would come out of the solid waste capital equipment fund.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's go to item number seven, consider approval of equipment purchase for the solid waste department. And this is coming out of sanitation reserve account.
First, the cat quote for the lease, that would be the capital equipment fund as well. Solid waste capital equipment fund. It's what Rick and I talked about.
This for the skid steers?
Yes.
Yes, solid waste. Two of those. Following it around $67,000, freedom, $66.61.
Yeah, the lease payment is $1,254.43. Twenty-four months.
And it's two of those, correct?
That's correct. One to landfill and one to voter.
I'm going to do each one of these as a, do a motion for each one. Do I have a motion to approve the $1,254.43 for payment for the skid steer?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion second.
Patrick, let me ask, this money is not an amendment. This is coming straight out of our budget, correct?
It's coming out, there is a reserve fund that's capital equipment purchase that's set aside under the solid waste authority for capital equipment. It's a separate entity. There's about $300,000 in that account.
And that's two. Any other discussion?
Well, that covered, I know what you had talked about, Stacy, as far as a mini excavator that we had problems with at the voter. Is that covering that piece of equipment we will need any more, or we need that, that mini excavator?
The one you're talking about, it's a track load that's down. There'll be another package in the future for the landfill equipment, and we're going to transfer one of those pieces to the voter, because the one that's there now is, you cannot.
Pass on.
Yes, sir. It'll be in the future.
Yeah. We've got, we've got a matso that will be surplus and when we can get these others in twice.
Any other discussion on two skid steers? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. This bag is the tractors.
The truck, tractor.
This cycle together.
Let's see, there's landfill down there. Yeah, you got it. Lots of stuff here. So the truck, we're looking at $3,497.38 a month for those.
Yes, sir.
And that would be?
Two front loaders.
Two front loaders and then?
Three tractors.
That have the bush hog?
Bush hogs, we're asking to buy instead of waste. The codes themselves.
What a confusion we have now.
I mean, it's a lot. I got a question, Stacy, on those tractors, $50, 65, are those the ones that are going to have, I guess they're going to have front end loaders on them?
Well, what we're asking for is the approval to do that, and he still has to, I've got to get with him, I don't think they need loaders on these. We just ask them to do it as a separate line item in case, but I don't think any of them will require a front end.
Because I know there's going to be bush hog, we're going to be using the bush hog, so I could figure out why we need loaders on them.
Yeah.
And we only need one bush hog. It's not a bush hog for each one. The landfill's got the bush hogs, I just got to have one for the voter.
Okay.
So it's just one.
As far as I follow, and enter the bid, laws and all that, how is all this being worked out?
We went through Sourcewell.
It's John Deere, leasing Sourcewell. It's there going.
So we're looking at leasing two front loaders, two John Deere tractors, and the 50, 65, and then loading the 5100 John Deere tractor. And the total on that is $3,497.38.
That would be the maximum down, and if they end up not needing the loaders, then that would be reduced by $204 a month, and it'd be $3,200.
You just mark it off.
Yes, sir. We're just getting a dollar amount, then he'll.
Work down.
Work down, everything, yes, sir. Correct. Same with the bush hogs, approved too, but probably just about one.
Okay. I got another question.
On the bush hogs? I need you to probably answer this. As far as we ever used a back wing bush hog down there? Is that something that we might utilize in the future versus buying? I mean, would we be better off to buy a back wing now and not buy one of these, or is that?
Andy can answer that, but it looks like it's in pretty good shape, the bush hog is.
It's in decent shape.
Okay.
That was just a question, if we might need to look at that.
All right, so, do I have a motion to approve two front loaders and three John Deere tractors for a maximum of $3,497.38 a month? I'll make that motion. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, we had discussion. Any other?
This, we're having discussion, it's coming out of the same account, right?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then we're going to look at a truck.
All right, we've got approved buy of the bush hog. That was at the top of the page, purchase. And it was maximum of $7,014, but if you end up needing more, then it'll be 35 months.
That's correct.
Yeah, we don't believe you saying that.
No, it's straight out of the head.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve one bush hog for $3,507.40?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We can, if we, if you need a second, if you need another one, we can discuss it next week. Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we'll look at a truck. And Ms. Holloman, that's correct.
We're asking to reserve that amount, and that would come out of service tax, I believe. Is that right? We're asking to reserve. We're asking to reserve the amount there, $39,898.50, but we're still working, we're asking for the funds to be reserved, and then we will come back because nobody stops to have to pick up, and so you're going to have to order it. Just wait it out, see. Donahoe, the state bid, Harvins is quoted, it's actually lower than state bid, but that's the amount of money we're asking to reserve so that we can get one ordered through Donahoe.
So do I have a motion for a budget amendment for $39,898.50 for a truck?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? If there is none, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And that's coming out of the solid waste.
That was mine, we didn't.
Yes, that was, that was one thing that I discussed with Rick.
Yeah.
On some of these items. The delegation's here.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, President. Council members, Mr. Mayor, citizens of Scottsboro, always appreciate the opportunity to speak before you all about the subject. One want to speak briefly about, two of the day is this municipal judge selection committee. Couple of weeks ago, Mr. Stewart appointed a selection committee, which contained the mayor, Mr. Ashburn, Mr. Bailey, and Ms. Green. And I understand there's, sometimes there's a little problem meeting, but eventually the Russell selection made, as of course you voted on it tonight. The reason I come forward to you tonight, I've got a concern, and that concern is toward the open meeting laws at the State of Alabama. Specifically, the new meeting law, which I believe was 215, 340. Also encompass serial meetings and basically the whole program of Alabama open meetings. A lot of things were reconfirmed in that, and there's some additions to it. I've heard Mr. Kimmerer speak on this before at the Board of Education meetings. As a matter of fact, I have a video of him making an excellent presentation on the open meetings law. It's available online on YouTube site. But, see, the question is, y'all formed a committee. And I realize maybe y'all tried to meet, but that meeting couldn't come together, but yet you made a choice, you made a decision, which I believe, in my way of thinking, exceeds the authority of the open meetings law. Now, y'all may not agree with this, Mr. Kimmerer may not agree with this. So I, I think the question becomes, hey, was this a actual committee that was formed, or was this an advisory committee? I mean, I would stand, I stand up here and tell you, y'all deliberated, you made a choice, you had the options, you made a choice, a fine choice. I, it's not a question of the choice, it's the procedure which you utilize, does it coincide with open meeting law, or does it not? You know, a committee, it's very specific in the law, it says, within the law, committees appointed by the, by the body politic, you know, the open meetings law is valid, is applicable to them. So the question here, was this not a committee selection, or was it an advisory committee? Exactly what was it? And I, the bottom line, I'm asking, if you're going to do something, do it right. You know, that's, that's the bottom line. I'm not saying you did it wrong. All I'm saying that there's a question in my mind, and I've been following open meetings for a long time, but a lot of study, and coming to the county commission, federal government, this city government meetings, and of course, if I see something that strikes the eye of interest, I think there's a question, I will bring it forward to you. But that's my question, that's my presentation, if there's any comments you have to make here, I. And I got to tell you, I am kind of interested in what Mr. Kimmerer thinks about this, if Mr. President would permit.
If the committee had been formed and met, it is my opinion that the committee for that purpose would not be the subject to the open meetings law, because they would not make the final decision. The council would make the final decision, which makes them basically advisory. I don't know anything about serial meeting, I don't know anything about the violation of open meetings law in regard to the selection that took place, but you did say something that was interesting. A committee formed by the body politic, a committee appointed by the chair of the council is not a committee appointed by the body politic. The chair has the right to report committees, the chair has the right to do anything the chair wishes when the law rules, unless overruled by the council. The council did not vote on that.
Second?
Serves basically as an advisory.
That's right. And I appreciate that, I appreciate your consideration. I would ask though, that you specify, so as not to create confusion, maybe it's not necessarily specified. That's from this citizen's point of view, I would ask that you, and from the press point of view, that you specify if it's going to be an advisory committee or a committee appointed by the whole, I realize Mr. Stewart appointed that individual, but it still is called a committee, and that's the reason I'm bringing it forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Go to reports. Mayor?
Scared to talk, Gary.
As you know, the city last year installed a storm shelter, and we made a down payment on shelter number two.
and we made a down payment on shelter number two. We need to form an advisory committee to discuss where we're going with this second shelter. We all got our opinion, but I'd like for a couple of council members to help advise the full body. And Josh reached out to Surviving Storm today, whom we do business with, have a contract with. And if we get the unit placed, if we tell them to go ahead, we're looking at August 1st on delivery of that second unit. So we need to try to, in the next 30 days, make some decision as to where and then allow the street department time to get the pad to.
Vote for it. Is that it, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Man is quiet.
Oh, Richard Bailey.
But, yes, I... Just want everyone to know that we are still working on recycling program. I know it's taking a little longer than expected. Talked with Stacy in the merit of the day. First of all, we finally got the warehouse cleaned out and that was a huge accomplishment. And so we're working on a plan to make sure that don't ever happen again. You know, that was two years worth of stuff that should have been recycled and ended up in a landfill. And so we want to make sure this is done right this time. So give us a little bit more time, but we're going to get this working right. And I appreciate everybody kind of, thank you. Thank you. Greg, Matt.
Just want everyone to come out. That's all I got.
Mike Ashburn.
Just want everybody, big weather aware, there's still some, could be a possibility of some strong storms coming through to about 11 o'clock tonight, I think. We all know what happened over Gunnar's, we could pop us before you know it. Just kind of keep up with it, don't let it sneak up on you. Appreciate y'all coming out.
Gary?
I did notice that the parallel parking at the end of Ross Street here, the pan has been completed. Let's see, they get done. You do have a lot more room to drive down through there now.
You do, sir.
I think that'll help, I think that'll help the police department. I think that'll help every, all the citizens that want to try to weave through there or used to weave through there. Maybe we can build straight through that. But thank y'all for coming tonight.
Thank you. And it does look really good. All right, on the storm shelter advisory committee, I'd like to appoint Mike Ashburn, Gary Stewart, of course, the mayor, and Josh. And on the other advisory committee that I appointed, we, I think we had on there May the 8th. Mayor, you were on.
Yeah, we were. They talked about it. One, the thing that we're going to do, and Roy's sitting here, we're going to, when we do meet and discuss the residents, we're going to have water, sewer gas, participate in those meetings because they've got some, I think, summer projects possibly and, you know, they need to know where we're headed and we need to know where they're headed so that, you know, we're all on the same page.
Yeah, great. That's about all I had. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
About second.
Second.
On the discussion, I just want to say that a lot of this tonight that we approved, typically we would have discussed it in a work session. Some of this we felt as though we needed to try to get as best we could tonight. Actually, I mean, so apologize for the way that we kind of went through some of that. We got it now. All in favor of the adjourn vote? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Adjourn. Thank y'all.